Okay, we want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting today. It's Monday, March the 20th. We'll call this meeting into order. And if everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve today's agenda with one amendment. We need to move Agenda Item Number 18 up to follow Agenda Item Number 12. So we'll insert that between 12 and 13. And move to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this amended agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And today we'd like to thank our videographer Seth Garglin for helping us out today. And at this time, we certainly want to congratulate the Bishop Garrigan Girls Basketball Team on their second straight state championship. So with that said, we do have a proclamation that we would like to read and present. So if we could have the team and the coaches gather in the front again, and if the council would like to gather on either side of them, we'll go ahead and we'll get started. This is the City of Algonquin proclamation honoring the 2023 Bishop Garrigan Girls State Champion Basketball Team. So whereas the dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team leadership of the 2023 Bishop Garrigan Girls Basketball Team has enabled these student athletes to earn the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Class 1A State Championship both this year and last. And whereas winning the 2023 Class 1A State Championship brought honor to Bishop Garrigan High School, the City of Algonquin, and Cassuth County on a local and state level. And whereas the coaches, team members, managers, parents, and supporters were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Richard Murphy, Mayor of the City of Algonquin, do hereby recognize and publicly commend the Bishop Garrigan Girls High School Basketball Team for their tremendous achievement in winning the Class 1A 2023 State Championship and for the team's back-to-back state championships dated this 20th day of March 2023. So congratulations, and we look forward to coming back next year and doing the same.
Let's see if we can squeeze everybody a little closer even. I don't think it's fair like you're saying closer now. But let's get a quick flip over everyone while we're all gathered here. Nice stuff. Excellent. I'm going to give you a count of three. One, two, three. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, do the council members have anything they would like to share? Hearing none, we'll move into an update from the city administrator.
We have a few personnel items to share. The city is accepting applications for a number of seasonal summer positions. This includes positions with the Public Works Parks Department, as well as a communications intern, as well as lifeguards, concessions, and pool staff, and baseball softball umpires. So those announcements and information and applications are on the city's various social media pages, as well as the city website. The city is also accepting applications for the community liaison, or the law enforcement community liaison position. Haley Kine, who had joined us in that role this past year, has accepted another position elsewhere, so she will be done at the end of this month. So we currently have that job posted, looking for our next law enforcement community liaison. And then our cemetery superintendent, John Bartolo, will be retiring here at the end of March. March 31st will be his last day, so we wish John well. He'd been with the city for 19 years, as first joined us as the Assistant Street Superintendent, before moving over to be the Cemetery Superintendent. And then the new Cemetery Superintendent, Matt Buscher, he had joined us here earlier this month, so we could have some overlap and succession and kind of knowledge transfer happen. So he's already on board, and will be taking over the full reins here come April 1. And then a few upcoming events I just want to make folks aware of is that the city will be hosting the Chamber of Commerce Coffee this Friday, March 24th, at 9:30 down at the Teets Park Shelter House, which will technically be a ribbon-cutting event for that. But that's been available to rent out to the public since January. And then after the Chamber Coffee, just to provide folks an opportunity, if they'd like to step in and see the interior space, we are going to have it open in an open house until noon. So if people can't make it at 9:30, they can stop over any point after that yet Friday morning and take a look at that project from the inside. And then a little bit further down the line, but it's always a popular event, so just want to get everyone's schedule, is the annual Algonquin Fire Department Pancake Breakfast. It'll be Saturday, April 15th, beginning at 6:00 a.m. and ending at 1:00.
Okay, thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 7, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 8, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our March 6th council meeting, approving the bills that are to be paid this cycle, and approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second, from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Oh, Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 9, which is a public hearing, and we'll open that public hearing at 5:09. And this public hearing concerns our 2023 street reconstruction project.
So this public hearing regards the 2023 Finn Drive and Wooster Street street reconstruction projects. The proposed project scope of work includes reconstruction of a portion of Finn Drive from Highway 18 South by approximately 1,200 linear feet, reconstruction of two blocks of Wooster Street from McGregor Street to Kennedy Street, reconstruction of the parking on Smith Street next to Maple Park Apartments, which the city with a lease with Housing and Urban Development that was signed in the 70s, are responsible for maintaining that. And then the fourth element of the project is an extension of a sanitary sewer main along Roan Street. The engineer's estimate of probable construction costs was $2,195,306. We have not received any public comments regarding this project in response to the notice.
With the parking down at Maple Park, is there going to be any changes to that parking? Maybe make possibly more spots, or no less spots?
There may end up being one additional spot on that south part of the property, so they have kind of some kind of awkward bump outs into the parking. We think one of those might be able to be eliminated. Matt would probably know we have some questions on utilities. More or less putting the parking back the way it was. But the big thing will be kind of right now where the current ADA parking is, is that approach is in very poor shape. So addressing that, and then there'll be up to, I believe it's six spots that will be ADA compliant. That, we won't necessarily mark all those as six, but as ADA, but if in the future, if there's a need to expand that type of parking there, it will be compliant.
You know, on the west side of that street, because of a shortage of parking, sometimes people park even temporarily, and it's really tight. You know, cars have to hit them if they're backing out from a spot. So I just thought if there's a chance to have any more spots, that'd be good. It's 5:12, and we'll close the public hearing then, and we'll move to new business agenda item Number 10, which is an ordinance, it's the second reading of an ordinance pertaining to parking violation fees.
Yes, this ordinance increases the fee for a parking violation citation from $3 to $25.
Any comments after our first reading?
We haven't received any, no.
Motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion to waive the second reading from Rodney and a second from Don. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Don, to approve this second reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 11 pertains to, this is a resolution pertaining to the 2023 Finn Drive and Wooster Street reconstruction, street improvements.
I'd like to invite Matt Cole, engineer with Bolton &amp; Mink. He's been working on this project with us, as well as, we've seen him a lot these last couple of years, and I'm sure again this summer. Just to kind of go over the process, where we're at for bids, and engineer's recommendation for moving forward.
Yeah, we moved bids last week, on Tuesday. We had two bidders, Reading, Gravel Escavating, and Wick's Construction &amp; Decor. Reading was the low bidder at $2,427,973.06. So was our recommendation to abort the project tonight to Reading Gravel Escavating. They've done the last two years of projects, and now for the floor reconstruction have been good work with. So I recommend that the council approves the bid price to Reading Gravel Escavating.
Any questions for Matt?
Matt, do you happen to recall off the top of your head on Smith Street, if it's the same number of stalls going back?
We're shifting, so the existing handicap stalls are all kind of on the hill on the north side of the parking lot, which are noncompliant. So we're moving the handicap stalls to the middle bay, I guess you could say, between the two aisles that are currently existing. We're in contact with Lumen to eliminate the pit that's in that south bump out, so we're going to gain a spot there. But I think we lost one overall spot, just with the handicap compliant stalls having the aisle in the middle of them to get to the sidewalk. So I think, you know, we're down a stall, but overall, we got as many stalls as we could fit in there. The parking's really deep, so we were able to kind of get a little buffer zone between the sidewalk and the parking stalls. That has some great chance to make that all work out there with the sidewalk.
Matt, why do you think, like, both contractors had variations in the manholes and the intakes costs compared to Bolton &amp; Mink's estimates? Do they just have different cost estimates coming in from suppliers?
Well, this was the first job we bid this year. We compared a lot of our numbers to last year's bid prices. The construction is generally the same. We have a little bit less underground this year than we did last year with McCoy &amp; Phillips. So we didn't have much to compare it to with 2023 bid numbers. So we just kind of try and take variations of last year's bid prices, and every year we've been seeing increased bid prices. So we try and, you know, increase, but at least for inflation, but inflation and high prices and manhole at all, all over the place. So it's kind of a moving target to have a good estimate before bids. So now that we have this bid, you know, we're going to kind of have our mill and overlay numbers a little bit closer down into what we're seeing this year. This was the first project we bid in Northern Isle, so.
And Finn Drive, I mean, that's set for heavier traffic, I'm assuming. I haven't talked about that, but that's.
Yeah, that's got eight inches of concrete pavement with a large gravel section underneath it, and dial-baskets to transfer over between the panels. Very similar to what we did on San La Grada.
So yeah, there'll be over excavation on that to make sure we're never having to shoot the base again.
Go back and shoot this mess again.
Yeah, put it underground again, remove the storm sewer, so. Yep, we've got a good road section there, so we can hold it for long.
What do you think causes that big dip right now on Finn Drive? Somewhere, I don't know, within the first eighth of a mile? I know, I know, but the biggest one, the biggest one right now, coming from the north, probably within the first eighth of a mile.
Yeah, I guess there's some sort of utility work, where there was just some really bad soil there. I know I've heard stories that they were pulling the paper down the street that pulled up first to pave the street, so I don't know if that is in fact true or not, but that only happened.
It might have been where a couple of years, well, I mean, this time of year is the worst for heaving. But I know a couple of years back, AMU did some work, and, you know, pronounced out there about what we see it as, you know, when you got, okay, work was done here, so then it's got different base material and a different material, and so it just, when it freezes and thaws, and it goes at a different rate, and that's where you get that variation. So it's probably where we did a repair, and then it just had different, you know, not-like materials around it.
Hopefully fixed.
I make a motion then to accept the resolution, or resolution accepting the bid and warrant the contact of Reading Gravel and Escavating.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody. Any other discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12, then, this is a resolution pertaining to the Mill and Overlay for this year 2023.
Yes, 2023 Street Improvements Project, as its name is the overlay portions for town this year, which include Elm Street from diagonal to Main Street, Durant Street from diagonal to Commercial, Wooster Street from McGregor to State Street, and then the library parking lot on Lud West and South, holding both the library. So we have plans and specs that are being prepared. We have a draft set in your council packet, and we will be uploading those end of this week to AMLB app after approval tonight. And bid opening will be April 11th at 11:00 a.m. And similar to Finn Drive and Wooster, we'll have another recommendation for the apparent bidder, and award that at the council meeting on April 7. So that's kind of the practice sample, and I'll perform a hearing that night as well for that project. Current estimate for that job is $1.145 million. So that does include a large portion of water main costs that AMU is covering. Elm Street, Durant Street, and Wooster Street are all getting underground work completed. New water mains on Elm and Durant, and new services on Wooster Street. So for the overlay project happens, so it's part of the project, and is going to cover all the water main costs and a portion of the street costs related to the water main work. Their split is in there as well.
So it's kind of the city proper side for streets, sidewalks, storm. It's about 400, or $546,000 for AMU's water work, approximately $477,000. And then for the library parking, $122,000, and that also does include the engineering estimates. So the current estimate for the Mill and Overlay on the city street is actually a little bit, about $200,000 lower than what we have in the current budget. So hopefully we see that savings there, because the reconstruction project can be about right at $200,000 over the original estimate, so. And some of that was just, you know, done to reduce scope of work as well.
Motion then to approve the resolution to order the bids and proving plans.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move then to, actually, agenda, we'll move Agenda Item Number 18, so that Matt is still up front here. Agenda Item Number 18 then is to approve a pay application for the Mill and Overlay from 2022.
Yeah, MyTop Services requested a pay estimate to get paid for the assigned work that they hadn't been paid for yet, that they completed late December. So we're putting this pay estimate together tonight to release a little bit of their engage and pay them for the work that they had done for the last one year. So total payment, this application, $7,714. Balance to finish, $117,000. We're not going to be using all that number, so we have some items that we overestimated, just in case we had to go, you know, a little bit farther with curb repairs and street repairs along the way. So we won't be, we won't be using up all of that $117,000. So our total project costs is going to come in under the construction budget, which is always good, so. We still have some punchless stuff to get done. We saw some clean up stuff get done, a lot seeding and all that, keep grass growing. But overall, the project is generally complete with some minor item remaining.
Move to approve the payout.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don, to approve this payout. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And Matt, since you're up there, I don't know if you'd mind just giving a quick update on kind of finishing up last year's Philip Street project?
Yes, we got, we'll do a walkthrough here once all the snow is finally melted. We do have seeding to get completed on that job. We have a little bit of concrete work left to do for some of the outlots. We have a mainline dugout and a ramped up driveway done last year, last fall. Still a little bit of concrete work remaining, some punchless items, and then kind of overall seed bed prep and the final seeding along the whole Philip Street corridor. There's also some pavement starting that's going to go on around the school for crosswalks and stop sign cars. And OKW is still scheduled to install activated stop signs, the light of stop signs, in front of Bishop Garrigan and in front of St. Cecilia there on Philip Street. I don't know what their schedule is, and last year they were waiting on some cars, but we do have all the concrete in the ground under the new roads, so should be an easy install once the weather permits and they get all their marks. I'm sure they have them by now.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Matt. Look forward to working with you again.
Yeah.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 13. This is a resolution that approves a series of amendments to the city's revolving loan fund.
Yes, this is an amendment to the administrative guidelines to the retail revolving loan fund. These were worked on with the RLF committee, as well as at a last council meeting's work session. So a few changes of note with the guideline amendment. First one is we're changing the program name and kind of rebranding it from the retail RLF to the small business RLF, just to be a more accurate name to the funding function of the program. Increases the maximum loan amount from $15,000 to $20,000. Sets a minimum loan amount of $5,000. Sets the interest rate at one-half of prime with a maximum rate of 2.5%. Clarifies the roles and procedures for appointing the RLF review committee, and then adds considerations for building facade and exterior improvements if pursuing a loan for those that, you know, what the plan is, and so those are part of the review. And then clarifies that if the city were to establish a historic design or facade program in the future, that this would be a funding source eligible used for that program, but that would be a separate program. And then a number of them are just kind of formatting, stylistic changes to make it a little more easier to read and interpret.
Jacob, you have the wrong resolution up there.
There we go. Well, I like the changes being made, the $20,000 probably, between 50 and 20 is probably better than just going to 15. Looks like it's a good idea.
Make a motion then approving the amendment to the revolving loan fund administration guidelines.
Second. Motion from Rodney, second from Harley. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 14, this is a resolution concerning an agreement with Iwork.
Last year, we began working with Iwork, a software company, on our code enforcement and building permit. And we'd been, really since 2020, we've been looking to identify a vendor for our GIS asset management. We thought Iwork would be a good choice for that, but decided, well, let's kind of ease in and get some experience on, again, just the code enforcement and building permit side of things. We've been satisfied with the product and the user friendliness of it. And so what we have here is a proposal from Iwork to expand our agreement with them to include essentially all of our public works assets under kind of their software and management tool. We had originally started looking at implementing kind of GIS in the field. I think it was 2020 is when we were going to start doing that. Then we had some, obviously, turnover with the staff positions, our public works director at the time, Ron Cover, he left. And so we kind of just put that on pause, and part of the reason for that was that the vendor that we had at that time, you could technically do the things that we wanted to do, but it was just very clunky. So as we've been kind of keeping an eye out on what would be a, you know, a different product, what's been really important to us is kind of, you know, the user friendliness of it. And you've just seen a lot of, in the last couple of years with technology, of kind of, you know, a shift towards, you know, providing services like these to governments. And I would kind of compare the system we did look at to what Iwork's proposal is, the difference between the old, like, old computers when you had to, you know, you could navigate it by keyboard commands, but unless you did that every day, or, you know, very adaptive computers, you couldn't just sit down and do it, as opposed to a mouse, which, you know, anyone can operate a computer. And so that's what we see the real value in pursuing Iwork's, again, kind of the user friendliness of it. So what we'd be looking at from them is a proposed three-year contract. The first year with the setup and implementation costs, it would be $17,000, and then it would be $10,000 a year after that. At all times, in the agreement, you know, the city owns the At all times in the agreement, you know, the city owns the data. We can pull it anytime we want. If we terminate the contract, we just have to ask for it, and they provide it to us. So we would move all of our current data that we have into their system, and then we could either download it ourselves and then update. So the big advantage under this is that being able to update, manipulate, change data will be a lot easier for us to do. So, for example, when we do, you know, when we remove a tree, it's really just, you know, you click it, identify it, and it logs, okay, that tree was removed and this was the date or this tree was planted. This is really going to become critical as we work on Emerald Ash Bore, you know, what trees are being treated, things like that. Also, when we're out in the field, you know, doing, it could be, you know, street storm sewer repair work or sanitary sewer work of just noting when improvements were made, a big advantages that we see in terms of identifying, developing scopes of work for projects. So right, say, like this past year, when we go and we look at, you know, kind of identifying, developing projects, it's usually a combination of a handwritten list that comes from the street department, you know, a spreadsheet from Barb, then a, you know, a Google Earth map that I have, and then, you know, kind of odds and ends that we get. And then it's, okay, we got to assemble this all together and then figure out what we're going to do with this as we go. Hey, we know that storm intake is, you know, starting to fall in on itself. We can take a picture, we can tag the location, it gets marked. And so in a week from then or a year from now, when we're looking at doing repair work or type of work, we can, you know, it's a comprehensive data set that we're building as well as we can record when we've done improvements. Another thing that we've been wanting to do with implementing GIS in the field is there's still a lot of un-mapped old county tile of, okay, when we dig that up, okay, just noting where that is. We had, you know, we were looking at this and we're maybe going to look at it a little bit later in the year, but with the turnover that we have, the street department with the new street superintendent, without made sense, like, well, let's, you know, we're going into kind of the, you know, the warmer months, let's go ahead and just get this implemented, you know, moving forward as opposed to waiting much longer. We're going to have another work session, but then we kind of got a, they threw in a sweetener. It's a little bit of time sensitive, so we thought, well, let's just put the whole thing, you know, as an action item because we think that the sweetener is worth it. And that sweetener is a lot of information gathering and data collection that iWork through their subsidiary company of Public Works One would provide. So part of what we'll be able to do with this in terms of just our, you know, our street infrastructure is identifying, you know, materials, repairs, you know, if there's issues of distress, when it was crack sealed, doesn't need to be crack sealed. But as part of this, they would come in and they would do a windshield survey of all of our paved streets and do a condition index identifying, you know, the current pavement. So it sets the baseline, you know, will as of, you know, 2023, this is a condition, you know, of all of our streets. The last time we'd had that full condition study done was back in 2016. So with all the street work that we've done, that was in the queue to look at actually doing next year. When it came possible that we can maybe do it through this, okay, well, it makes sense maybe to have that move up. The other item that they would do is we currently don't have a comprehensive data set of the location of city signage, so stop signs, yield signs, no parking signs. So that's something that they would also do is go around, take that inventory, create that data set in GIS, so we have, you know, a comprehensive sign inventory. So those are some of the costs that then would just be included as part of that year one seventeen thousand dollar setup. You know, we didn't go out and get quotes for what it would take to hire a company to do either of those things, but it would be significant. I mean, it's a lot of time to do all that. And since we were looking at, you know, using them as a vendor anyways, you know, we think it makes sense, like, well, hey, if they can perform that as well, that's even more of a reason. Because again, if after three years we end this or if we terminated early, we still own that data. And so the next vendor we would go with, you know, we can take that, those attribute tables and that data set and just move it over to a different platform. We currently use, oh God, what's the name of the company?
Integrity.
Integrity GIS, basically just as our data host. And like, it has the interactive map of like, for zoning. That's about thirty-five hundred dollars a year. So we would terminate that agreement. So, you know, we'll, you know, Monday I would be usually going towards that, would then go towards this. And then we just look at terms of the efficiencies of just operational wise as well as, you know, documenting things permanently and not just depending on the memory of who's been doing this a long time or the person who was here knew where it was in that file, but now the new person does it. You know, we have, okay, this is accessible from multiple sites, multiple people. We can have, this is our comprehensive, you know, inventory notes, planning document. And so those, that knowledge and things that you, you know, will lose just over time or turnover, you know, we'll have that in a central location.
Now, it's good to have them do the analysis of the streets and keeping in mind our complete streets objective. Would they be marking, say, areas where sidewalks are nonexistent or anything like that?
We didn't discuss that specifically.
If they're going around anyway.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to get out and check the condition of the sidewalk, but at least note if it's there or not.
We can ask them if that would be something.
I think we can see that on our current GIS too. If you're looking, you can see if there's a sidewalk there or not. I just wanted, one other thing that is so good about this, wastewater treatment found a sewer main down the street that has never been mapped. It's been there for seventy-some years. They didn't know until someone had a backup. It would take Mark over an hour to put that new sewer main in our current GIS system. With this system, he could click, click, insert the information, and he's done.
And assuming that's all in, you could run an analysis pretty easily of what's at the top of the list as far as needs?
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, like, we could run reports of, like, you know, identify every stop sign in Algonah. Or, yeah, we could run a, you know, they've got, I think, you know, five or six different condition types on the streets, and we could just say, you know, identify everyone that has this type of condition or has this ranking. And so, yeah, we could, okay, these are, you know, these are, these areas are, you know, worse, you know, streets that we need to focus on. And ultimately, we'll still have to have, you know, an engineer involved to kind of make that final analysis, but it takes away a lot of that legwork or having to have engineers do it or trying to, you know, scramble and have city staff do it here and there. If we can build it and maintain it as we go, yeah, we can, you know, and then, yeah, build work plans around that in the short term and the long term. Because I, you know, when Kurt was leaving, we had a number of meetings and a lot of, I use Google Earth for a lot of stuff, and, you know, just notes he had over time that, you know, I just have a huge list of all that, you know, just weird things that he remembered of, hey, you know, note that on this, that, you know, underneath here, there's that. And, you know, for a long time, that's how things have been in all sorts of governments and level, but with the exit, the change that we've had and that, you know, we've got experience with, and we think this, this product is going to really user friendly, which was important because if it's not, it's going to be deterrent to use it, that we think makes sense now to move forward with it and try implementing it and see how it goes.
Okay, I'd move to approve the agreement with iWork.
I'll second.
A motion from Harley, second from Jody. Any other discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number fifteen is a resolution adopting a public records policy.
This, so Iowa Chapter 22 is Iowa's public records or open records law, and it's a rather lengthy law, and there's, you know, a section kind of specific to cities like Algonah that sets forth the requirements of responding to how fees can be charged, how they can't be charged. So basically, what this policy sets forth is under the, what's written in Chapter 22 is how the city of Algonah would go about implementing those laws. So we identify custodians of records by the, depending on the record type, by fire chief, police chief, library director, public works director, and then all other city departments or general questions to the city clerk. It identifies the preferred information when making a records request as well as, you know, a written request form. People aren't required to use that form. They can, you know, submit a written, you know, list or, you know, they can just ask for it in person. It also identifies kind of our process for setting up in-person examination of records. So people can ask to, you know, examine records and actually look at the originals or they can request copies of those records. So if there's a, you know, request to examine records, then you're supposed to have, you know, the custodian or their appointee, you know, present there with them so they're not altering the records, taking them, damaging them in any way. So, you know, basically establishes that as well as creating copies of records. You know, and we're also noting here routine requests, so things that are commonly available, ordinances, resolutions, minutes, you know, that are easy to provide, you know, you don't have to go through a big formal process to, you know, get those to be produced. You know, those can just be, you know, handled. But really, what this gets at is requests that would take, you know, more than thirty minutes. So that's either, you know, requesting, you know, you know, several documents, you know, you have to specify exactly what type of documents. It can't just be, you know, overly broad. Or if, you know, we have to do research, you know, down in our archives or we have to have the city attorney review files to determine if there's confidential information, what is confidential, what needs to be redacted. So anything that would take over thirty minutes in any one given month, then we have the right to charge for our actual costs. So that would be for the staff person performing the search, making the copies, you know, or the third party doing that review. Again, the Iowa Code, Chapter 22, sets forth what charges can be applied, and they're for actual costs, and it's just the hourly wage, so we can't charge them, you know, based on their benefits and IPers and things like that. It's just, you know, what their set hourly wage rate is. We haven't seen here, but you know, you've seen this happen in, you know, other cities in Iowa where, I mean, you can get requests that take several hours, if not dozens of hours. So this provides the means that, okay, if that's going to happen, yeah, we need to provide those records, but, you know, there's the way to incur costs to the city for doing that research.
So most of our newer records are going to be on electronic, but I suppose we still have a lot of the older stuff on paper.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and this is something, the full policy itself, and in reality, I don't see us using that often. It's just in case we would to get that type of request. Vast majority of the requests we get would fall under that routine requests, which are, you know, less than a half hour easily, you know, produced. And so it's really just kind of for those very unique circumstances of when, you know, most of this, or, you know, would apply.
Just good to have it in place.
I don't know why we wouldn't match the Iowa Code, so it seems like it's a good move. Make a motion then to approve the resolution adopting a public records policy.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney, second from Harley. Any other discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen then is a resolution adopting the fee schedule for the public records request.
So the way we set it up is we have our public records policy, and the fees are set by a separate resolution. So in the future, if we need to adjust the fees, it's just that resolution we need to change. And then ultimately, we're still working towards the goal of having a comprehensive fee document that everything's in there, that gets reviewed and updated once a year. So that's another reason why we set up this way. That's something we just kind of slowly continue to work on. This sets forth, you know, for the labor services agreement, when that threshold is met after thirty minutes, how that is calculated. And then sets forth, you know, fees for copying, black and white color copy, requests for things on CDs, flash drives, things like that, basically just what the cost is for us to provide those things in a particular format. They just want to come in and review records other than, you know, just the time if it's more than thirty minutes. You know, there's no charge to examine records in person.
And you talked about coming to examine them. Are you talking, you provide a screen for them to examine, or is this just paper stuff you're talking about?
So if they wanted to, you know, look at our minutes book from, you know, nineteen eighty-eight, well, that one, we actually, those minutes are digitized, so we could just, yeah, provide them a screen or if it's easier for us, we could just choose to provide them copies even if they didn't request them and not charge them. But, yeah, so it just, you know, be that means either the physical copy or the screen to view them.
Okay, move to approve the fee schedule.
Second.
A motion from Harley, second from Brad. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Motion carried. Agenda item number seventeen pertains to the employee safety manual.
So this approves amendments to the employee general safety manual. There's really two changes made. One regards slip-resistant footwear, which came from IMWCA, our work rinse comp provider. One, we recently got a grant that we're able to provide, snow cleats to all city staff. Part of that is that we have a policy on that, so establishes that, you know, if you work outside during these months, you know, you need to be wearing snow cleats either provided to you or purchased with your clothing allowance when the circumstances are met. And then the second amendment is just regarding administrative amendments to the policy. Let me just pull it up, actually. So these, you know, would be immaterial amendments of, you know, fixing clerical errors, clarifying, you know, what a policy, you know, what it means if there's a question on it, if we want to, you know, update graphics or add supplemental information to something that's already established. But really, like I said, those things that don't substantially alter policies, so that way every time there's a, oh, we need to tweak that, it doesn't technically have to come before council. But anything that would be a material change, any new policies, any repeal of policies, those would also have to come before council, but it does just authorize the city administrator to adopt administrative amendments as needed, like I said, for those immaterial changes.
Can I entertain a motion to approve this employee safety manual?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion from Don, second from Jody. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you, city staff, for updating all these policies and manuals and staying on top of that, so.
Tons of fun.
Agenda item number nineteen then is to accept a bid and award contract concerning the two thousand and twenty-three ash tree removals.
We had put out an ad in the paper and on the city's website, we are accepting bids for ash tree removal. We listed the DBH sizes of all the trees. We did have available a list of addresses for the trees if someone wanted that. It was available at City Hall, or I could email it out. We had the bid opening last Thursday, and you can, the bid tab is attached there. Our high bid was ninety-six thousand dollars and our low bid was thirty-two thousand and five hundred dollars. The thirty-two thousand and five hundred dollars, AJ's Tree Service has done work in town, so I recommend we award the contract to AJ's.
I have a question on that one.
I have a question on that one. So I feel at a call that it was, that after AJ was informing me of the low bid, that he said the DBH, there was a discrepancy on the DBH and that he may need to adjust his prices if it's higher. And then was told that's, we'll work with that.
He went around individually and measured every tree and had a list of DBHs. When he found the discrepancies, he said to me, what do I do because what you've got here is not what I found? I said, base your bid on what is out there for bid. On the sheet I gave you, you base your bid. I said, depending on if it, because it stated right in there that the council or that the city had the right to increase or decrease the amount of trees off of the list. So I said, once the bid is awarded, we will negotiate additional trees or remove some trees off of the list. That's how it was stated. Tony wanted to know about the ones he had found. I said, we can look at that. He's coming in at nine o'clock in the morning tomorrow. We're going to talk to him about adding trees since he was a low bidder, do a change and have more trees done. We had no idea at the time where the bids were going to come in. Everyone, we had 10 bidders, everyone bid off of the same list. And then we will negotiate if we remove a tree or add a tree or whatever.
Okay, I'm confused on what you meant by bid on what's out there.
That.
And that he, the DBH that was out there, so we're.
There's a list attached on the, this list that Jacob's bringing up right here. There is a list of all the DBHs that they were supposed to be bidding on, size. Then if they requested, they got a list of every tree that matched that DBH. So they were told to make their bid, if they found an error or what they thought was discrepancy, I said, you still need to make your bid according to this list. So everybody is bidding on the same list. And I said that multiple times to people.
So, you know, if it's, you know, it says in there that, you know, these are estimated, if it's, you know, it's, well, it's, you know, you've got three nines and one eight instead of, you know, two and two, like, well, it was estimated, you know, lump sum. Now, if there's, you know, material difference, you know, you've got a dozen trees on here that, you know, are all, you know, greater than 30, you know, DBH and, you know, then, okay, we might, you know, it's still the low bid based on what everyone bid on, but at that point, we may not have a conversation with the contractor, okay, what's actually, you know, reasonable? You know, if there is like just a material, you know, difference, that is huge, whereas if it's just a, okay, you measured it at eight, our contractor measured it at nine, you know, it says estimated in there and you're bidding a lump sum.
So this bid, the 32.5, though, that's what he's getting paid for the work.
For these trees.
Okay. So if this adds up to 500 DBHs, that's the, so he doesn't get paid for more unless we go over the.
Correct.
Over the 500, I don't know what that adds up to.
And he said after he was awarded the bid, he based his bid per DBH.
Yes.
So if we reduce it, he'll know how much to reduce it. If we increase it by so many DBHs, he'll know what to increase it.
So whatever, 32,500 divided by 500, then each DBH over that is that amount.
Right.
Is basically how we would plan to do it, is what you're saying.
Correct. You know, we had a certain amount set aside. We did not know what the bids were going to come in. We were estimating $1,000 a tree. So we figured 75 trees, we were looking at $75,000. That was an estimate. We didn't know if it was going to come in lower than that or higher than that, and we had bids both ways. We had bids that come in at $96,000. If that was the low bid, we would have had to remove some trees from our list to get it down to the 75,000. Since it came in at 32.5, we plan on adding some trees since we have available funds. That's just like our mill and overlay too, you know? You bid what's out there, and if we find more curb work that needs to be done or less curb work that needs to be done, the contract is changed.
Yeah, I think the concern was just that the bid was the low bid and then all of a sudden it was, but there might be more DBH, so I might, I might send an additional bill if there is.
Well, if we increase.
And then that bid actually would increase at the discrepancy of the contract.
Well, and like I said, these are estimate sizes. You know, one person might measure a DBH, you know, it's diameter breast height, so everybody's breast height is a little bit different. So grass masters did the list for us, so if they measured here, gave us a number. If Tony measured up here or down here, it might be off a little bit. But everybody based their bid off this amount.
Yeah, I guess I don't have a problem as long as the DBH stays for the extra trees and for the extra amount stays the same.
The price per DBH will.
Price per DBH stays the same and doesn't go up $100 extra because it's bigger.
No.
Whatever. As long as that price.
We will take this DBH and divide it into the $32,500 and that's the DBH.
Yeah, as long as that stays the same.
Right.
As we move up. But I see the concern.
Well, I think part of the negotiation is going to be, you know, realistically, how much can you get done? Because, I mean, we don't want to see, you know, 50 trees, you know, started and then, okay, you know, something happens and, you know, these don't get restored, you know, or something like that. So, you know, it might just be a matter of, you know, this is realistic, how much you can get done in that circumstance, you know? The other thing we could look at doing, because, you know, the, you know, if, say, AJ says, you know, I'm maxed out, we still have some funds that we think, well, we could still do some trees. You know, we could check with the second lowest bid. Now, that'd be something that would be negotiated because obviously the quantity pricing wouldn't be there. But, you know, and at that point, we wouldn't be over, you know, the threshold we were doing, see the bids like this. But that'd be another option that we could look at if in terms of adding trees, if AJ says, no, 75, I'm good. You know, we could discuss, okay, the next lowest, are you interested in taking out these additional trees that weren't in there? And what would be your price for that? But those are really, you know, conversations we have once, you know, the contracts are awarded and.
We wanted a base bid to know who was going to be low, et cetera. And like I said, just like our mill and overlay project, it's a base bid. You're bidding basically a dollar amount for all of these trees, which you probably are going to figure price per DBH. Just like the mill and overlay, well, we want to add this block to the mill and overlay. Well, you're going to pay the price for that much asphalt. Or we need to put this much concrete in, you're going to pay the same amount that was bid for the extended concrete curb and gutter work.
Dylan, Dylan Walker's here with DJ Tree Service, so do you mind stepping up and asking quite briefly?
This is more of a second informal, I guess. When I go to a bid tree and I call it up again, everything changes. Everybody's bid style is a little different. The DBH is diameter breast height, but that is all it says, you know? That's 20 inches around and it's an ash tree. That's a Chevy pickup with a hundred thousand miles. There's power lines tangled in the one, some of these, there's nothing around them at all that you can just flop. They're 12 inches around, they're not going to cause any damage. So, I mean, DBH is a standard, but that's all it says is the diameter of that tree. So then when you rate it, when you want to adjust the, if he gets awarded more trees at the same DBH, well, if I'm doing two trees right here and the third tree awarded to right there, it's the cost to unload equipment, you know, get the tree down, haul material away, reload equipment, move to the next project. So the DBH doesn't necessarily matter, it's time, material to complete the job. So that's, I recommend steering away from DBH and a hole because it's not the whole story. You could have a 20-inch tree in the front yard curbside, we could throw it in the backyard on top of the house, the price isn't proportional whatsoever, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. You know, most, all these other bids were bid by time. The biggest kicker with this was the 75 trees just blasted across town. How was, how am I going to load equipment and just keep moving to the job? It's not like I'm just running down the block here. So I think that was, that was my, I thought about it.
But you said you did send out locations of trees?
Anybody who asked for a location, we gave them a list of locations.
Okay.
And, you know, there's things we want to clarify and when we do this in the future, we could certainly incorporate them in. But, you know, part of it was, yeah, we're putting out a huge number of trees, so you're, you know, there's a large amount of work and the trade-off for getting that amount of work is you're going to, you know, have a mix of different types of trees, if you're going to have some that are conveniently located and easy to drop, or have other ones that aren't. And that's why we're looking for, okay, all these together, what's your price to take all that on?
And I would estimate at least three, maybe up to five, did get the list of trees. And I know for sure AJ's and a couple others, one was from eastern Iowa, came to town and actually looked at the location of all these trees before they put in their bid.
So, once the bid is out there and you have the list of all the trees, they do have the option of starting where there's the most trees together and kind of working across town, so you need to load and unload the fewest amount of times?
We didn't specify, like, you know, these trees are phase one and need to be done at this date or these together. It's, you know, what, once we have the contractor on board, okay, what makes sense? You know, we don't, at the same time, we don't want you to cut down 75 trees and not get any restoration. It's kind of once we know who we're on board, okay, how do we want to go about this to making sure that it's, we can be as reasonable as possible and, you know, also, you know, accountable as well.
Is this like stump removal and all too?
Yes, everything.
Including the complete removal, grind out of all stumps, area of creative debris, backfill with black dirt, repair any damage to areas around the tree, and then reseeding.
Okay, and then as far as replanting trees, is that something the city's going to be taking care of? Or how's the replanting going?
Well, we'll replant where possible, but a lot of these trees are in the right of way have utilities underneath them, so you cannot replant.
Okay.
But, as I said, the replanting would be, you know, separate, entirely separate.
Right.
Okay. Well, actually, I was surprised to see 10 bidders. I thought with this many trees in distress in the next few years, I was prepared for very few.
I mean, it's just quite a discrepancy with the bids, but you're comfortable with the low bid, that it fills all the needs, yeah? Okay.
AJ's Tree Service has done work in town.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I just mean, it's just a big variance.
So, yeah.
From our low bid to our high bid.
AJ's and DJ, I, either one of them I would not be concerned with because they've done a lot of work in town.
You know, there'd be, if someone's like, oh, I'm just going to start LLC to take down trees to see this opportunity, then we get the discussion, okay, is this a, you know, a responsive, responsible bidder? You know, if they, if they don't have experience or, you know, anything like that, then, you know, that could be a means for saying no. But, yeah, given that, yeah, the lowest is a, you know, we hadn't worked with them before. If we could verify that, yep, they're qualified, they're responsible, they're responsive.
And that, that's one of the reasons we required them to give us the insurance certificate with their bid. I think there was three, maybe four, that did not include the insurance certificate. So even if they were low bid, they did not follow bid guidelines, they would have been thrown out.
Okay. Make a motion to approve AJ's Tree Service for the removal of the ash trees.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney, second from Jody, to accept this bid and award the contract. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so the number two was direct city staff to negotiate more of additional trees, but AJ's or the second lowest bidder has won the house. How are we figuring that, those additional trees?
Well, I went through the list. This list takes care of all of our rankings of zeros and ones, and then we have some twos. So I went through the list and gathered up all the rest of the twos and sorted them by address. So the twos are mostly very close to where these are already at. Is Howard determining that?
So as we discussed in work session of, for kind of this calendar year, having 50,000, 55,000 to go towards ash tree removals, so that would be, you know, it'd have to, it would be a reasonable number of, you know, in terms of like, you know, can you take more on and what would that be? You know, so basically, we want to keep 5,000 for continued C as well as treatment. So it'd be kind of, you know, that 17,500. Does it make sense to try to, between the one and or two, do some additional work? I mean, we hire, I mean, contractors usually to do trees all the time. We don't necessarily have to go out and, you know, procure it this way, just because of the quantity we did this time around. But usually it's just like, hey, you know, Park, we've got five trees to take down this summer, we just get quotes from some local crews and take care of it. So it'd really just be, okay, that balance in our budget of what we have planned for this year, you know, it doesn't make sense and can we, you know, get good pricing to add to max out that? And if not, we'll just spend less than what we have funded for.
So I've got my list of additional trees. So when we meet with Tony tomorrow, I'm going to say, here's the additional trees we would like you to do. And if he goes, whoa, that's way too many, I can't get all that done in a year, then we'll have to regroup and possibly offer it to the second person, the second lowest bid, to see if they could do it at the same contract price or negotiate a little bit higher price. But if we've got the money and the budget, it'd be better to get them down now because we've got so many ash trees to take down. And we're starting with the worst of them going upwards.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor to accept this bid. Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
No.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 20, our final agenda item, is an application for tax abatement.
This is an application for Irving vitalization tax abatement for new commercial construction out on 2460 East Oak Street. They have requested the 10-year decreasing rate. They are within the Irving vitalization area and recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney, second from Jody, to approve this tax abatement. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And before we adjourn, I do want to thank Assistant Police Chief Mark Bocca for being with us tonight. So it is 6:09 and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.